Madison Heights, the date is June thirteenth, two thousand and sixteen. It's seven thirty P. M. I call this meeting to order. Could we please have a roll call?
Mayor Potem Bliss.
Here.
Councilman Clark.
Roseanne.
Councilman Corbett.
Here.
Councilman Geddings.
Here.
Councilwoman Scott.
Here.
Councilman Saltus.
Here.
Mayor Hartman.
Yes, I'm here. To start this meeting, I had a few words about the tragedy in Orlando, Florida. Yesterday, early Sunday morning, an American-born murderer killed fifty people, injuring fifty others in Orlando, Florida. The victims were targeted because they attended a party celebrating Florida's Gay Pride Month. Some are calling the murders domestic terrorism against the lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transsexual community. Others report the murderer was pledged to terrorist organizations called ISIS, ISIL, or DASH, but the intent was clear: hate. Today, we think about the pain and suffering of the victims and their families, but we also worry about the quick judgment cast upon an entire community for the sins of one malevolent madman. We summon our basic human instinct to love, to nurture, and to heal at moments like this. The horror and terror in Orlando beg the question: Where does this hate come from? It cannot be from religion. Islam is a religion of peace. Islam is literally derived from the Arabic root word for peace. The Quran says in chapter five, verse thirty-three, "Whosoever killed a person, it shall be as if he killed all mankind." As with the other Abrahamic religions, Christianity and Judaism, peace and the pursuit of tranquility is the unifying message: Thou shalt not kill. We therefore condemn the perversion of religious doctrine to justify murder, hate, and exclusion. No matter which or none of the contemporary world religions you practice, we are taught to seek humility, tolerance, and forgiveness. Peter asked Jesus, "How many times shall I forgive my brother when he sins against me?" Up to seven times? Jesus answered, "I tell you, not seven times, but seventy-seven times." Therefore, we condemn the Orlando murders as vile acts of hate, but at the same time, we must summon our strength within ourselves to be forgiving. So going forward, what can we learn and what is it that we do not understand? Well, first, we can draw a line between our thoughts and our actions. We can embrace each other's right to think evil thoughts or to speak hateful words. However, we, as the leaders of the city of progress who claim to embrace diversity, inclusion, and compassion, at all times, we must condemn actions that harm others. In conclusion, Madison Heights, by its very name, Heights, we strive for higher moral, political, and cultural attainment. And no matter where you think you're headed to in the afterlife, we spend this life together. Let's love each other and learn from each other. And today and every other day, let's share our love and the peace we have in Madison Heights with our brothers and sisters in Orlando, Florida. Thank you. Next on tonight's agenda, we'll have the invocation given by Councilman Rich Clark, and then we'll proceed to the pledge of allegiance. If you could please stand, if you're able.
Heavenly Father, remind us that we are here to serve, not to be served, that we should remember all the kindness extended to us and forgive the fault of others, encourage us to join together in our efforts to better the lives of others. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thanks, you may be seated. There are no presentations this evening, so can, let's see, are there any additions or deletions to tonight's agenda? Okay, we'll go to item A one, two, and three, which our business license is initial. What's the wish of council?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Clark.
I would make a motion to approve business license initial, number one, Team Rehabilitation, a physical therapy business, which is a new business to the city. Number two, Madison Kitchen Incorporated, a restaurant. This is a change of ownership. Number three, Exclusive Quick Lube, a quick lube shop and online sales of used cars. This is also a new business. And these are, these are subject to all departments and ordinance requirements.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Corbett.
Support, sir.
A motion to accept all business licenses initial, A one, A two, A three, subject to all departments and ordinance requirements, is there discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passes. There are no business licenses tonight for temporary, seasonal, or non-commercial. There are also no public hearings. Is there anything on tonight's agenda that someone in the audience would like to be brought forward at this moment? If not, we'll go to meeting open to the public. Oh, I'm sorry, Gloria, did you have something on tonight's agenda that you want to be brought forward?
Yes, I do. That is the resolution. Last time, when the, at the end of the previous meeting, talking, there was talk about the Christian beliefs being a fraudulent reason and is accused of being discriminatory. And we, the thing is, God is coming. He made everything, and we're all going to have to answer to his court. And to be, to subject somebody to, to be involved in somebody else's sin and to be included into somebody else's sin and be forced into it is, is wrong. The most, most Christians believe to just live, let live, let, let the Holy Spirit deal with their souls.
Miss report.
But, you know, you give them, give people a warning about what's coming down, you let them know that what's, what's ahead, and then you let it go and just let God handle it after that. But to call what Christians do fraudulent and discriminatory and all that because they don't want to be included into somebody else's sin is wrong.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. If council doesn't object, as the chair, I'd like to just bring this issue, we'll bring this issue right up, Gloria Moore and the rest, whoever wants to discuss this. So this is, if you look at the agenda, it's the second page, under section D, reports, item three. So this is item D three, report from the city attorney. It's a non-binding resolution that, if adopted, will be sent to the state Capitol to persuade our state leaders to not pursue laws that prevent local control over discrimination Since at least two thousand and thirteen and before and after, the city council has grappled with the constitutionality of excluding certain classes of people from the protection of our city laws. Back in two thousand and fourteen, you probably read the headlines that several cities across Michigan passed human rights ordinances, which either created new law or amended old law. Back then, the Madison Heights City Council did not act. No laws were changed in Madison Heights. Tonight, the city council is not working on a human rights ordinance. I'll repeat, Madison Heights is not adopting or considering a human rights ordinance tonight. Up for consideration is a non-binding resolution that recites the legal and cultural history of the LGBTQ community. The non-binding resolution concludes with a statement that we, as a city, reaffirm our commitment to the Equal Protection Clause found in the Fourteenth Amendment to the United States Constitution, that all people have equal rights to those laws applied to all citizens. And finally, the resolution says that a copy of this non-binding resolution will be sent to all of our leaders in Lansing. This is not a law. It is a public statement reaffirming the Equal Protection Clause of the Fourteenth Amendment. So with that, we'll go to item D three, and I believe the city manager has a report, or I invite him to read the language of the non-binding resolution, and then I will open up a public hearing inviting all comments. I'll provide some basic ground rules just to maintain civility and to keep the ball rolling. And after public comments, if there are any comments from city council, we'll consider them. If there's a motion, we'll consider that. Is that a plan? So we'll start with the city manager right now, then we'll go to public comment, then it'll be up to the council if there's any action. Mr. Myers?
Yes, thank you, your honor. With council's indulgence, I'll read the abridged version of the resolution. The only, the only items I'll, I'll omit are the case citations, but if you're interested in those, you can get them online. They are part of the public agenda packet. This is a resolution of the city of Madison Heights opposing discrimination based on gender, gender identity, or sexual orientation. Whereas the First Amendment of the Bill of Rights is the cornerstone of the country's free, open, and tolerant society. It is the basis of a representative democracy that prizes individual liberty. The amendment protects five freedoms: freedom of religion, freedom of the press, freedom of speech, freedom of assembly, and freedom of petition. The First Amendment specifically states as follows: "Congress shall make no law respecting an establishment of religion or prohibiting the free exercise thereof, or abridging the freedom of speech or of the press, or the right of the people peaceably to assemble and petition the government for redress of grievances." Whereas the First Amendment originally applied to only federal limitations on individual rights, but by virtue of the passage of the Fourteenth Amendment and its requirement for due process of law and equal protection under the law and the court's doctrine of incorporation, these First Amendment freedoms were extended to the states. And whereas, in regard to the freedom of religion, the First Amendment can be divided into two clauses, the Establishment Clause and the Free Exercise Clause. The Establishment Clause states, quote, "Congress shall make no law respecting an establishment of religion," end quote. The Free Exercise Clause states, quote, "or prohibiting the free exercise thereof," end quote. And whereas, the Establishment Clause guarantees, guarantees that the government shall not establish a state religion, shall not prefer one religion over another religion, and shall not prefer religion over no religion, or vice versa. The Free Exercise Clause guarantees that the government cannot prohibit a person from worshiping or practicing his or her own religion. And whereas, the Establishment Clause and the Free Exercise Clause have, at times, conflicted with each other, but the courts resolve such conflicts with the U.S. Supreme Court being the ultimate arbiter. And whereas, the U.S. Supreme Court has said that the Free Exercise Clause protects beliefs, not all actions, in the name of religion. Therefore, the government is free to prohibit acts in the name of religion so long as it has compelling interest in doing so. For example, the original Mormon practice of polygamy was deemed unconstitutional and subject to prohibition. The court in Reynolds versus United States said that those who practice polygamy could no more be exempt from the law than those who may wish to practice human sacrifice as part of their religious belief. The court in Employment Division versus Smith denied the appeal of two Native Americans fired from their jobs as counselors for ingesting peyote as part of their religious ceremonies as members of the Native American Church. The court held that an individual's religious beliefs do not excuse him or her from compliance with an otherwise valid law prohibiting conduct that the government is free to regulate. The court in Prince versus Massachusetts held that the use of children to distribute religious literature contrary to child labor laws did not violate the Free Exercise Clause or parental rights. The court said, "The right to practice religion freely does not include the right to expose the community or the child to communicable disease or the latter to ill health and death." And in the matter of Elisha McCauley, the Massachusetts Supreme Court held that a child's interest outweighs the interest of religion when the child's parents, Jehovah's Witnesses, refused consent for a needed blood transfusion for their eight-year-old daughter suffering from leukemia. And whereas, although religious freedom or liberty is a fundamental part of our country, it does not give any of us a right to ignore the law or to harm others because of who they are or be used as an excuse to discriminate against people because of their gender, gender identity, or sexual orientation. And whereas, a florist in the state of Washington refused to sell flowers to a same-sex couple, Kurt Freed, a faculty member of Columbia Basin College, and Robert Ingersoll, a manager of Goodwill, for their wedding because of the florist's religious beliefs. The trial court in Benton County, Washington, held that businesses open to the general public may not violate anti-discrimination laws even on the basis of sincerely held religious beliefs. And whereas, a baker in the state of Colorado refused to bake a wedding cake for a same-sex couple, Charlie Craig and David Mullins, because of the baker's religious beliefs. The Colorado Civil Rights Division held that the baker violated Colorado law, which prohibits businesses from refusing service based on factors such as race, sex, marital status, or sexual orientation. And whereas, a baker in the state of Oregon refused to sell a wedding cake to a woman even though the woman had purchased baked goods from the same bakery before after she informed the baker that the cake was for her same-sex wedding, despite the fact that the baker's actions were contrary to the Oregon Equality Act of two thousand and seven. And whereas, an elected county clerk in the state of Kentucky who was sworn into office agreeing to uphold the United States Constitution refused to hand out marriage licenses to same-sex couples, notwithstanding the decision of the U.S. Supreme Court that legal prohibitions of same-sex marriage violated the due process and equal protection requirements of the Fourteenth Amendment. And whereas, the state of North Carolina has passed legislation outlawing the right of local communities to pass anti-discrimination ordinances and forcing transgender people to use restrooms based only on their biological gender, notwithstanding the fact that such action constitutes a violation of Title VII of the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-four as amended, Title IX of the Education Amendments of nineteen seventy-two, and the Violence Against Women Reauthorization Act of two thousand and thirteen. And whereas, a funeral home in the state of Michigan fired its funeral director for being a transgender woman, notwithstanding the fact that federal courts and the Equal Employment Opportunity Commission have held that sex discrimination in employment protects transgender people. And whereas, notwithstanding the serious problems facing the state of Michigan, such as crumbling roads and bridges, unsafe drinking water in Flint, and dilapidated schools in Detroit, State Senator Tom Casperson has seen fit to introduce legislation, Senate Bill nine-nine-three, similar to the controversial law in North Carolina that would legalize discrimination against transgender people. If passed, this legislation will cost the state of Michigan millions of dollars and needed federal funds and subject the state to boycott. And whereas, it was not very long ago when business owners objected to civil rights laws integrating restaurants and other public accommodations because of their sincerely held religious belief that God wanted the races to be separate, when religious-affiliated universities prohibited students from engaging in interracial dating because their religious beliefs were opposed to interracial relationships, when interracial marriage between consenting adults was prohibited in some states, and when employers insisted that they should be allowed to pay women less money because their religious beliefs dictated that men should be the primary breadwinners of the family. And whereas, requiring integration, equal rights, and equal pay are not attacks on religious freedom or liberty, but necessary measures to ensure a free, open, and tolerant society for everyone. Now, therefore, be it resolved that on this thirteenth day of June, two thousand and sixteen, the city council of the city of Madison Heights, a Michigan municipal corporation organized under and existing by virtue of the laws of the state of Michigan, states that the religious freedom or liberty does not give anyone the right to ignore the law or to discriminate against others because of their gender, gender identity, or sexual orientation. Be it further resolved that on the thirteenth day of June, two thousand and sixteen, the city council of Madison Heights reaffirms its commitment to due process of law and equal protection under the law for all people, including those who are gay, lesbian, bisexual, transgender, or questioning their gender identity. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be sent to Michigan Governor Rick Snyder, Michigan Attorney General Bill Shutey, Michigan Secretary of State Ruth Johnson, State Senator Vincent Gregory, State Representative Jim Townsend, Oakland County Chief Executive L. Brooks Patterson, Oakland County Commissioner Gary McGilvery, U.S. Senator Gary Peters, and U.S. Senator Debbie Stavano.
Thank you, Mr. Myers. Before I ask for council action or council comments, I invite the public to address city council on this subject. Just to review, a member of the public asked for us to bring item D three, which is later on in the agenda, and we're discussing D three now, which is the resolution opposing discrimination based on gender, gender identity, and sexual orientation, as just read by the city manager. So right now, I'd invite public comment, if anyone would like to speak on this issue. I'll have meeting open to the public after this subject for any other issues, but right now, if anyone would like to speak, come to the podium now. Please speak, not from your chair, but from the podium. So if you have any retorts, or replies, or responses to what someone else says, please wait until you can come speak in the microphone so those at home can participate in the conversation. It's your choice, and we do not require it, but it's helpful if you provide your name and address. And please direct your comments and questions to me as the chair and not directly to any other council members or staff. And it's our tradition to limit comments to three minutes, so I may interrupt you and ask you to conclude your remarks. So please, welcome to Madison Heights. What's your comment on this issue?
My name's Alyssa Bottrill, three-one-five-five-three Madison Avenue. I wanted to comment on this resolution. I want to thank the council for sending this resolution, or I should say, offering to send this resolution, to our state representatives. We are the city of progress. I'm a member of this community. I'm raising a young child in this community. I want my community to be an inclusive community and a loving community. It's a small step in the right direction. I honestly wish that our city did have a human rights ordinance. I know that we did not do that in the past, but like I said, this resolution is a small step in the right direction. It's not okay to treat an entire group of people as something less than human. It's not okay to discriminate. It's not okay to murder. The things that were done yesterday in Orlando make it even more important for us to speak up and speak out against discrimination. And I want to convey what the mayor already said, in that that was not a belief of Islam that we saw yesterday. That was a madman pervert, acting on perversion of religion and taking people's lives. Those were someone's children, and he murdered them without knowing anything else about them, other than that they were of the LGBT community. He used that as an excuse to kill someone's child. As I said, I'm raising a young child in this community, and it deeply hurts me that someone could use their, could do something like that to someone's child. So please continue to make us the city of progress, make us a loving community, protect people's rights, and treat them as human beings as they should. Thank you for this resolution. Please do more.
Thank you, Ms. Would anyone else like to address city council on this issue? It's item D three, under reports. Please come to the podium now. Good evening, Mr. Sanders.
Hi, you guys know who I am. I'm Paul Sanders. I live at two-six-four-three-three Rialto Street here in Madison Heights. Lived here a long time. Well, you're submitting a resolution, but I kind of get a feeling you've already made your opinion on everything by the big sticker you got on the front of this.
What does the sticker say?
You know, the majority of us here, it says, "More love, less hate. Support peace. Support Orlando." That happened two days ago. How quickly can you get one of those made? Now, folks, I don't know how far you're going to keep pushing this, and I'm an old guy, and I'm not going to last forever. You've already got it to the point where the girls are supposedly taking showers with the boys and the boys with the girls in high school and junior high. How much further are you going to push this stuff? I don't really see a lot of people giving transgenders or whatever a hard time. We never heard about this stuff when I was a boy growing up. And now you want to make all this stuff, and you think that's going to make us real popular with a Republican government? Gosh, I wish you guys would think this through a little further before you make these decisions. That's all. God bless you. And I'm sorry, I'm not telling you which God to believe in, because we're not allowed to do that either from what I just heard read to me. Bless y'all. Maybe that'll be okay. I hope things go well for you, but come on, please.
Thank you, Mr. Sanders. Mr. Mayor? May I? Do you mind if it waits to the end of the public comment? This way. Thank you, Mr. Saltus. Mr. Stevens, hi.
Yes. George Stevens, I live at two-eight-seven-seven-seven, two-eight-three-sevens, Groveland, Madison Heights. This is a first for me. I kind of concur to agree, and I think you misquoted the Quran. I'm an Eastern Orthodox Catholic, and we know what it's like to try to live as neighbors with the religion of peace for fifteen hundred years. And that's all that I'll say about that. And I'm very disgusted with the short notice that we received on such a serious issue, and I agree it's a serious issue. Found out about it in the CNG newspaper on our anniversary. And my wife and I, we were so upset that we wound up just getting a carryout, which isn't all bad if it's from Leo's. But anyway, I'm a little upset with the way Christians are characterized in this article, and I would personally, I'd like to know who was the historian that misquoted the First Amendment and added to it? I just, you know, for the record, who compiled, I know who the quotations are from, Corbett and our mayor, who seems to have a white guilt problem, but who, who compiled the, and the misinterpretation of Title IX, which, as you know, President Obama likes to use a heavy hand and hit us over the head with our tax dollars and saying, "If we don't do such and such, okay, we, we won't get the money that we got coming to us." I think that's a terrible way to run a country. And I also object to being called, because I support marriage, that a certain Joe Biden calls us homophobic, and a certain Barack Hussein Obama says we cling to our guns and religion, and he regards the First Amendment guarantee of religions' rights that we can practice, no, worship as we please, but not practice our religion in all its regards. And I think it's important to note, as we consider this transgender resolution, that throughout that whole newspaper article, it was a Christian faithful that were demonized, the bakers, the florists, and they, and as was correctly noted in one of the past paragraphs, that they sold baked goods to that couple on a regular basis, that it only when it came to validate what Christians regard as an abomination, the union of people of the same sex, that they had a problem with that. And those people were run out of business and still owe hundreds of thousands of dollars in legal fees. And if you think that is being tolerant, you're sadly mistaken. We come to a very ridiculous crossroads in this country, and we're, we're suffering from Ferndale envy, that we aren't located on the Woodward-Libb corridor, okay? Maybe we should name Maybe we should name John R. David Woodward Boulevard, because he started this at Oakland County.
Mr. Stevens, do you have any closing comments?
No, but we're, I belong to a pro-life, pro-family group, and what we did in Berkeley, my son had the misfortune of going there, and they caught the Ferndale bug. They figured to compete economically, they had to do these sorts of things, okay? So, we picketed on a regular basis. They had a city manager go in there and try to remove the church from their city seal and the nuclear family. And after about six months of consistent picketing, she high-tailed it out of there, now went to Pontiac. And the former mayor collected enough signatures to have that stall. But what we're witnessing today is a state-sponsored Inquisition of Christians. I love the transgender, but I think the most, we talk about bullying, the worst form of bullying is a transgender that would mutilate themselves, castrate themselves, not accept, as the Roman Catholic Church teaches, to accept your biology. I encourage you to read the May 27 copy of the Michigan Catholic, where it talks how we're supposed to deal with a transgender, and because it's either a disorder or dysphoria, and they need to learn to accept their biology. And you are rushing into this, and I'm telling you, if this is not tabled, because emotions are running high, we will begin picketing tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I still invite public comment on this subject. It is report D.3. If you'd like to speak on this issue now, please come to the podium. Now is the time. Hearing no other, seeing no other people rise to speak to council, I invite City Council. What's the wish to council on this?
Mr. Mayor?
Oh, Mr. Corbett, please.
Hi.
I'm calling for a motion. I guess we'll open up, I'm asking for a motion, then we'll go into discussion.
All right. I move to adopt the resolution for the City of Madison Heights, opposing discrimination based on gender, gender identity, or sexual orientation, as presented by the city attorney. Is there discussion on that item?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Clark?
Years ago, I lived discrimination. When our troop train left Detroit, we had blacks on it with us. We got to our destination, first time we got past Gwin Town. One of the blacks who was with us, we started going a drugstore. Another one from Detroit was afraid to go in the drugstore. He says, "I'll wait out here. Guys, go in and get what you want, but I, I'm afraid to go in there." Not only that, but some of the train stations we went into, not so much on the troop train, but on the smaller trains, they had, just like the bus, a separate section for the blacks in the back of the train. And their seats were not even cushioned. They were just wooden seats. So, I've seen, and that was back in '53, discrimination was pretty, pretty tough back then. And there was one other episode, I won't even bring it up, that it actually disgusts me. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Are there other council comments? Your Honor?
Mayor Pro Tem Bliss, please.
So, this is a really difficult issue, because there is so much, I guess, so many opinions on both sides. It's really heated, as was discussed by multiple people in the audience. It's difficult to discuss, because passions run deep. For me, I'm, I've always been consistent every time we have one of these non-binding resolutions, every single time. If we want to discuss, and I think the ordinances in other communities have been brought up, if we want to discuss that, let's put it to a vote of the people and have the actual discussion and be done with it. But if we want to keep writing these non-binding resolutions, which are basically opinion pieces, they're political pats on the back that don't inspire any actual change, why don't we just draft personal petitions and have each other sign it? By my count, at the, at the cost of our city attorney's office, you know, broke down their hourly rate of $100, by the cost of our senior staff and salaried employees, including those of us sitting up here, we spent, by my estimate, and I could be wrong, but by my estimate, we spent $4,000 to $5,000 of taxpayer money in the past 18 months, passing seven of these resolutions, with about $800 tonight. It doesn't change anything. The debate keeps going on. Everybody in the audience for it doesn't get what they want. Everybody in the audience against it doesn't get what they want. But we get to sit up here and say that we've done something, but we haven't done anything. All we've done is spend taxpayer money to review an issue for us to send a letter of support up to Lansing to the people that are actually going to vote on this. We haven't done anything. And so, I agree, we shouldn't be discriminating. It's unacceptable to discriminate against anyone for any reason, but I'd ask that we stop fooling ourselves into believing that we're actually making change, when all we're doing is pushing out resolutions that are non-binding, that do nothing except for let everybody know where we stand. Now, for this issue at hand, it's already on the agenda. We've already spent the taxpayer dollars. So, I would ask that because it's unacceptable to discriminate against anybody for any reason, that we add what the Equal Opportunity, Equal Employment Opportunity Commission, which we listed in this resolution, lists as other non-protected classes. Those are things like marital status, political affiliation, status as a parent, in addition to sexual orientation and gender identity. Discrimination's horrible for any reason at all. Our Constitution covers some of it. History is going to look back and understand that we need to oppose discrimination for anybody, for any reason. That includes religion, it includes lifestyle choices, includes anything. But I will ask two things. Number one, I will make a substitute motion that we add the other non-protected classes to this resolution. I would hope that I would get support on that, because I do not want to send this back, or ask for another resolution, because I'm not going to do it. I would ask that we, as a council, stop spending taxpayer dollars on resolutions that don't move the needle. If we want to act, if we want to have this real discussion, let's put it to the voters, like it's done in other communities, and have the debate take place and actually make a change. But until we're willing to do that, let's just stop patting ourselves on the back for writing these resolutions.
Mr. Mayor?
That's it, Your Honor.
Thank you. Okay, there's a motion on the table for a substitute motion to add the other non-protected classes to this resolution, and in the future, to stop paying taxpayer money on non-binding resolutions, and instead put those to the vote of an electorate.
Your Honor, that was an ask. That wasn't a part of my motion.
Okay, so the motion, the substitute motion to add the other non-protected classes to the resolution, would you please restate those classes?
On the Equal Employment Opportunity Commission website, they talk about other protections that are not fully protected as the current laws of America are. And those are marital status, political affiliation, status as a parent, sexual orientation, and gender identity.
I'll ask one more time. Is there a second for the substitute motion? If not, it fails, for lack of a second.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Clark?
One thing I will have to agree, and just about everything Mayor Pro Tem Bliss had to say about taxpayer money, wasting it on non-binding laws that we're voting on.
Okay, I'll state it one more time. Thanks, Mr. Clark. Mayor Pro Tem Bliss has stated a substitute motion to add the other non-protected classes, which are listed under the Equal Employment Commission's website, and they include marital status, parent, political affiliation, status as a parent, gender identity, and sexual orientation. I'll ask one more time. Is there a second for the substitute motion, or the substitute motion will fail?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mayor?
I'll second.
There was a second already. Is it?
Oh, I haven't, I didn't hear the second on the substitute.
No, I didn't hear the second of the first time, but...
Right, there was, you already called for a second. Is this a change in the motion?
Oh, no, I'm sorry. No change in the motion. All I did was clarify which those classes, classes were.
Okay. He's still looking for a second.
I'm still looking for a second on the, on the substitute motion.
I will second it, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so there's a substitute motion. I'll restate it one more time. The substitute motion would end the entire debate. The substitute motion is to adopt the resolution opposing discrimination based on gender, gender identity, and sexual orientation, and to add the other non-protected classes, as listed on the Equal Employment website. And those other classes include marital status, political affiliation, status as a parent, gender identity, and sexual orientation. It was a substitute motion by Mayor Pro Tem Bliss, seconded by Councilman Clark. Is there discussion on the substitute motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Corbett?
The problem, of course, with the resolution by Mr. Bliss, obviously is an attempt to gut the original intent of the resolution. As I'm not aware of marital status, parental rights, and the other items he mentions are normally not subject to religious test, which is the basis of the original resolution. So, just, just so we're clear, this is just another attempt to, to gut the resolution or take the heart out of it.
Your Honor, if I may.
Mr. Bliss, please.
The reason, and I'm not trying to gut it, and I am going to vote in favor of the resolution, because I believe wholeheartedly that discrimination against anybody is unacceptable. But when we talk about, you know, religion, marital status, status as a parent, are absolutely lumped in very similarly to sexual orientation and gender identity, as far as discrimination and biases go. Now, I hate that this resolution is sitting here. I wish we'd be either having the real debate, or not talking at all about it after all the wasted taxpayer expense. But because we're here, and because it's already happened, and because that investment has already taken place, I'm simply asking that we amplify that investment and get a better return by wishing and proclaiming that we want no discrimination for any reason at all. That's all I'm asking. And I'll vote for the motion. You know, if, if we don't want to go with the substitute motion, I'm okay with that too. I just hope that we don't keep having this dialogue without any actual results, you know, with the non-binding resolutions. But I, I hope that we can all get together and say, "There's a lot of reasons that people discriminate. We've already done a lot of research, and we've put a lot of case law into this. Let's add all the reasons that people would discriminate, send that off to Lansing, and hope that actions get taken, at least on a couple of these reasons."
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Sherman?
Yes. In addition to marital status and political affiliation and parental status, there are a lot of other categories that the law prohibits discrimination against, that being such things as race and nationality and that sort of thing. This ordinance, or this resolution, which is the City of Madison Heights going on record and stating on record for all those in Lansing and those in Washington, that the city opposes discrimination based on gender, gender identity, or sexual orientation, pertains to recent cases. All those cases that are cited in here are where people are using the idea of religious liberty as a defense. The cases involving marital status, political affiliation, parental status, we haven't, I haven't heard any cases where the defense of religious liberty was being used. This resolution, or this resolution is not asking people to change their religious beliefs. It's not asking people to change their personal beliefs. It's asking people to acknowledge that we cannot discriminate against others because of their gender, their gender identity, or their sexual orientation, and that the defense of religious liberty is not an appropriate defense to that. When someone has a bakery or a store open to the public, they cannot pick and choose who they are going to sell their products to. And so, by broadening this resolution beyond the matters that we have before us, you're essentially diluting its, its purpose.
Your Honor? Mr. Bliss, please.
Just, just as a point of order, Mr. Sherman is not a member of council, and that was a, that was not necessarily a legal opinion, as so much as it was, I don't know, a testimony to, to the case. And so, I, I just, as a, as a point of order, I, I don't like that, because we, as a council, need to discuss this. Now, I don't need to draw this on anymore. I'd be happy to withdraw my substitute motion, so, so we can get this, get this passed and move on to the business that our, our taxpayers actually want us to do. And then, I just hope that, and I'm formally withdrawing my substitute motion, I just hope that we can stop having this dialogue and this debate over these non-binding resolutions. Make it binding, make it law, or stop wasting taxpayer money on it. That, that's all that I ask.
Okay, so the substitute motion's been withdrawn by the maker, so we're back to the original motion that's still on the table. That was the motion made by council.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah?
With respect, I believe Mr. Clark has to agree.
Yes, I'll go along.
Okay, thank you, sir. I appreciate the point of order. So, the maker in support withdraw the substitute motion. I'm going to restate the original motion, then still invite closing comments or additional comments from council. Motion by Councilman Corbett, supported by Councilman Soltis, to adopt the resolution opposing discrimination based on gender, gender identity, or sexual orientation, as presented by the city attorney's office. City Council, any other comments? I'll ask for a roll call vote. Comment, please, Mr. Soltis.
I'm glad Mr. Sherman said that. I appreciate that. I would have asked for it. I think it was enlightening. I think it helped put things in perspective. Mayor Pro Tem and I kind of disagree with resolutions. I think it's critical. I think it's important. I think that sign is why we did it. And I asked the city manager last night if we could do it, and I'd ask him again. I think this is an important issue that needs to be addressed, and these non-binding resolutions, you can't necessarily put a cost on it. This, if all the cities can get together and make, make these non-binding resolutions, it makes a movement of change. That's the purpose. It creates change if other people join along. We can't do it on our own. We know that. But if other cities join us, we can make some real change.
Are there any comments from City Council? Any other comments from City Council?
I don't think we're embarrassing.
I'll restate the question. I'll ask you if you vote yes or no. The motion is to adopt a resolution opposing discrimination based on gender, gender identity, or sexual orientation. Will the clerk please give a roll call vote?
Yes. Mayor Pro Tem Bliss?
Yes.
Councilman Clark?
Yes.
Councilman Corbett?
Yes.
Councilman Geddings?
Yes.
Councilwoman Scott?
Yes.
Councilman Soltis?
Absolutely.
Mayor Hartwell?
I vote yes. The motion passes. We'll move on to the next item. We're still, oh, which is meeting open to the public. So, we'll open the meeting to the public for comments on any subject. It's your call, and I'll repeat the same rules as I did about half an hour ago. It's your option. It's not a requirement, but please state your name and address. Please limit your comments to three minutes or less, and please direct your comments and questions to me. And it's important that you come to the microphone and speak so people at home can understand what's being discussed. Mrs. Moore, welcome back.
In this case, the microphone comes to the person. Friends of the Madison Heights area, senior citizens, is having another third Tuesday public meeting over at Wilkinson at 7:00. public meeting over at Wilkinson at 7:00. Everyone is invited. Beverage and snacks are included. I just, I am stunned about your vote, though.
Thank you, ma'am. Would anyone else like to address City Council? The meeting's open to the public.
Good evening. Hillary Taylor, 26131 Wolverine Street, Upper Flat. I have a question about the appointments that, so it looks as though at the regular City Council meeting on May 23rd, you had discussion about the appointments. Is that correct, in terms of what's open and available, looking at the agenda? Or is that something to be discussed? It's, I'm confused about the agenda, basically, in that you have unfinished business, and then you have minutes from the regular council, and underneath that you have the appointments? So the appointments are to be discussed, were discussed on May 23rd?
There's a completely, I see what you're saying. So on tonight's agenda, we alphabetize the order of our agenda, but then there's no letter for minutes, or there's no letter for appointments. It's not unfinished business.
Mr. Mayor?
Standing agenda items?
Your Honor, we have a standing agenda item for appointments.
Okay. And is that something you're going to discuss this evening?
Yes, oh, for sure, yes.
Okay. And is that going to be open to the public at that time?
The appointments to boards and commissions?
Yes, in terms of discussion.
They're generally held quickly. They're admins, you know, admin-type decisions. There's typically no public comment.
Well, I applied, and I just mentioned...
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, there will be a public vote, publicly nominated, publicly discussed by council, but it's generally, the discussion is among the voters.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I think if you'll stick around for about 20 minutes, I think you'll get what you're looking for, ma'am.
Sounds good. All right, thank you.
I just, I had a preview of the agenda, so you're...
Okay. I was unclear in terms of your parliamentary procedure, in terms of where that was falling, and if it was discussed on the 23rd, or if it was to be discussed today. So thank you. All right.
Thank you, Ms. Would anyone else like to address City Council?
Hi again.
Hello.
Alyssa Batrell, 31553 Madison Avenue. I'm sorry, I'm still losing my voice a little bit. I just wanted to comment on what Mayor Pro Tem Bliss mentioned as what he believes to be a waste of taxpayer money. I'm a taxpayer, and I feel that having what might be a difficult conversation for some, although I believe it an important conversation, is not a waste of taxpayer money. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address City Council? Meeting's open to the public. Any subject? Okay, well, closed meeting open to the public. Item C1 tonight is a communication from the United Way of Southeastern Michigan. Mr. Myers?
Yes, Your Honor. The United Way for Southeastern Michigan is requesting to use Rosie's Park for their meetup and eat-up event on Thursday, June 23rd, from 3:00 to 6:00 p.m. Staff and I recommend the council approve the event, subject to compliance with council's policy on uniform insurance requirements for special events.
What's the wish of City Council?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Corbett?
Sure, I move that the council approve the request for United Way to use Rosie's Park for a meetup and eat-up event on the 23rd, subject to all appropriate insurance and administrative approvals.
And the council's, Your Honor, and the council's policy on uniform insurance requirements.
What he said. One question before I, I sign off. Was there a waiver request on that?
Your Honor, no, they have not requested a waiver of fees.
Well, I'm not, you know, if council's game, I am. I would include a waiver of that, even though they didn't ask for it. But it is charity, and we're normally pretty nice on that stuff, so. I'd include it in the motion.
Thank you. Is there a second for the motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Geddings?
Support.
Thank you, Mr. Geddings. Motion by Councilman Corbett, seconded by Councilman Geddings, to approve the request from the United Way of Southeastern Michigan to use Rosie's Park for the meetup and eat-up on June 23rd, 2016, including a waiver of fees. And this is subject to compliance with the City Council's policy on uniform insurance requirements. Is there discussion on the item? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Next on the agenda is item D, reports. We've already considered item D3, so we'll begin with item D1 from the deputy city manager.
Yes, Your Honor. The city participates in the Michigan Municipal Risk Management Authority's liability insurance pool with a current retention level of $250,000. At the suggestion of city representative and our risk manager, Keith Potter, we have analyzed the economic benefits of increasing this retention to $500,000 and found that the city will experience a savings of over $119,000 in our first-year premiums. The city also participates in the optional stop-loss program with an entry point of $900,000, which limits the, the city's cash payments during a fiscal year for those costs falling within the city's retention amount. Because the premium savings would occur every year, and it is like, and it is unlikely we would experience more than two claims of over $250,000 occurring in a year, staff, the risk manager, and I recommend increasing the retention level to $500,000 effective on July 1st, 2016.
Thank you, sir. What's the wish of City Council?
Mr. Mayor?
Mrs. Scott?
I move that we adjust the, that we adjust the city's self-insured liability insurance retention level by increasing the retention to $500,000 effective July 1st, 2016.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Geddings, a second, thank you. Motion by Councilwoman Scott, seconded by Councilman Geddings, to adjust the city's self-insured liability insurance retention level by increasing that level to $500,000 beginning July 1st, 2016. Is there discussion? Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Next is item D2, a report from the DPS director.
Yes, Your Honor. Again, this year, the city is eligible for reimbursement from the county for project expenses related to our fight against the West Nile virus. The Department of Public Services recently sent crews out to drop the larvicide briquettes in each catch basin throughout the entire city. These briquettes, which last 180 days, prevent mosquito larvae from maturing into adults, reducing the summer mosquito population significantly. Basins will be tested periodically to assure that the larvicide is doing its job. DPS is also responsible for treating areas of standing, standing water in the parks, commercial and industrial areas, such as stormwater retention and detention ponds and fountains with larvicide on a monthly basis. Staff and I recommend the council approve the resolution to allow the city to receive reimbursement from Oakland County in the amount of $6,347.44 for project expenses in the fight against West Nile virus. I, I would note that this year's funding reflects a sizable increase from last year, and it covers one-half of our program expenses. And this, this increase is due in large part to efforts to combat the potential threat of Zika virus, and Oakland County health officials have told us that they'll be trapping and monitoring mosquitoes throughout the county this year to gather more data.
Thank you, sir. What is the wish of City Council?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Clark?
I'd make a motion to approve the West Nile virus abatement reimbursement resolution.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor?
Mrs. Scott?
Second.
Thank you. A motion by Councilman Clark, seconded by Councilwoman Scott, to approve the West Nile virus abatement reimbursement resolution. Any discussion?
Your Honor?
Mr. Corbett?
Sir, if I could, I think it's Mr. Vitale handles this, right? Is this his department? Is there? I've got just a couple of questions for her. I just, there was some discussion on the radio earlier today. They were talking about the need for, you know, you have three experts, and you get 20 opinions as to whether or not the, I just lost the word, Zika?
Zika.
Zika virus. Could you talk a little bit how this program may benefit just in case the experts are wrong, which never, ever happens, and we find ourselves with incidents in this area?
Good eve, good evening, Your Honor and council. What's happening with this program from Oakland County is Zika is fairly new to the scene, and the sizable increase this year is due in part because Oakland County is doing some more research this year, and they're looking like this program is going to morph into more of a direction of a mosquito, in general, abatement program, and not focus so much just on West Nile virus. It's still too early to tell. There's only six confirmed cases here in Michigan at this point, but those are based on traveling criteria.
Could you just briefly describe the normal techniques your department uses to, to treat the water, the basins, and whether or not there's any spraying in public land?
There's, there's two treatment applications. The first treatment is every catch basin throughout the city is treated with a briquette. It's actually dropped into the basin. There's an optimal time to drop that in, which is about the end of May, which we've done. And the second application is any standing water locations throughout the city, we use a larvicide that is basically hand-applied to that standing water location. And what that does is it stops the mosquito from becoming a full adult. That, in turn, controls the amount of numbers that, that breed in those locations.
One, just one other question, sir. Regarding the, the county park, not the friendship woods, is that, that's still our responsibility for treating that as the landlord, or how is it handled?
Your Honor, we, due to our supplies that we get in from Oakland County, we actually, because we used to treat that area in the past, we'll drop off a couple bags of ectolax as the material, and county staff will use that in the standing water. They're there every day. They're monitoring how the water's holding in the park there, and they'll treat those as needed.
Okay. Thank you very much, sir.
Great. Thank, thank you, Mr. Vitale. Any other council comment? All right, we have a motion to approve the West Nile virus abatement reimbursement resolution. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Item D3 report was handled earlier in tonight's meeting upon a request from a member of the audience. That motion did carry. We'll see. Next on the agenda is E. We don't have anything tonight, but we do have something under item F, bid awards and purchases from the DPS director.
Yes, Your Honor. Staff has determined that based on the age of the trails and a field survey of the relative trail condition at both the Ambassador and Civic Center parks, that the trail networks are in need of significant rehabilitation. The adopted fiscal year 2017 budget includes $70,000 for Phase 2 asphalt trail repair at Civic Center Park, and combined with two years of carry-forward funding of $50,000 from fiscal 2015 for trail repairs at Ambassador and Civic Center Park, and $80,000 in fiscal 2016 for fails, Phase 1 trail repair at Civic Center Park. This represents a total amount of $200,000 for a complete path replacement at Civic Center and Ambassador Parks. The project scope for this bid includes the pulverizing of the existing asphalt walking path, regrading, rolling, compacting the base, installing any necessary embankments, and installing a 3 1/2 inch thick asphalt pavement at Ambassador, at Ambassador and Civic Center Parks. The contractor would also be responsible for restoring any damaged grass areas with topsoil, seed, and mulch. On April 12th, the city posted the bid with the Mitten Online Purchasing Cooperative. A total of 789 vendors received the notice, and 78 vendors downloaded the attachments. A total of three vendors attended the mandatory pre-bid meeting, and one vendor submitted a bid by the May 5th deadline. The engineer's estimate of our total anticipated project cost is $206,250. Total asphalt paving was the only bidder with a total bid price of $248,575. Based on the results of the background check and the firm's years of experience performing similar work, staff and I recommend the council award the 2016 Walking Path Improvement Project contract to the sole bidder, Total Asphalt Paving, for the unit prices in their bid tabulation for a total cost not to exceed $200,000. And as noted in the, in the staff report, the city will be modifying the estimated quantities to keep the project within budget while providing a finished, high-quality finished product, and the vendor is, is completely aware of this. Phase 1 of the Ambassador Park project will be completed in fiscal year 2016, with the remaining funds being carried forward to fiscal 2017 to complete Phase 2, which is Civic Center, next month.
Thank you, sir. What's the wish of City Council?
Mr. Mayor?
Mrs. Scott?
I move that City Council award the 2016 Walking Path Improvement Project contract to the sole bidder, Total Asphalt Paving, Inc., for the unit prices specified in the bid tabulation for a total cost not to exceed $200,000.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Geddings?
Second.
Thank you, sir. Motion by Councilwoman Scott, seconded by Councilman Geddings, to award the 2016 Trail Improvement Contract to the sole bidder, Total Asphalt Paving, Inc., for unit prices, which are included in the bid tabulation, for a total amount not to exceed $200,000. Is there discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. We have nothing under item G, ordinances, nor item H, unfinished business, which brings us to the minutes. Can I please have a motion to adopt the minutes?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Clark?
I'd make a motion that the minutes of the regular meeting, May 23rd, 2016, be adopted as printed.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor?
Mrs. Scott?
Second.
Thank you, ma'am. Motion to adopt the minutes for May 23rd, 2016, as printed. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Now we move on to appointments.
Your Honor, if I could, if I could start the discussion, there's two, there are two typos in the agenda. If you look under Brownfield Redevelopment Authority and Downtown Development Authority, the two terms noted under A and B, Ms. Renshaw and Mr. Johnson, those expiration terms are 6/19/16 in both cases, so that would be an expiration date of four years, so 6/19/20.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor.
So let's begin with Brownfield Redevelopment Authority and the Downtown Development Authority. Those are mayor's appointment. So I will bring for council's consideration, I appoint Ms. Renshaw and Mr. Johnson, who are willing to serve four-year terms, which will expire June 2020.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Corbett?
Sir, I move to confirm the mayor's nominations of Ms. Renshaw and Mr. Johnson.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Geddings?
Go ahead.
Mrs. Scott, I'll give it to Mrs. Scott. Thank you. Okay, fine. Any discussion? All in favor of confirming the mayor's appointment of Ms. Renshaw and Mr. Johnson to the Brownfield Board and the DDA, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Congratulations. They're, they're both in.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Corbett?
I have a couple of recommendations on the library advisory board for the regular terms. I would move to appoint Mrs. Hasho and Mrs. Batrell to terms which will be expiring 7/1/18. I'll have a separate nomination in a second.
Thank you. Is there a second to the nominations?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Clark?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? It'll be all in favor of appointing Ms. Hasho and Ms. Batrell to a two-year term to expire July 2018 to the library advisory board. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Congratulations.
Your Honor?
Yes, sir.
In the last five minutes, I've managed to misplace the lady's nomination form, but I would move to, to appoint, and what is your last name, ma'am? I'm sorry.
Hillary Taylor?
Ms. Hillary Taylor, to a term on the library advisory board expiring, well, I guess it'd be the short term here, 7/1/17.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Second.
Thank you. There's a nomination by Councilman Corbett, seconded by Councilwoman Scott, to appoint Ms. Hillary Taylor to the library advisory board on a term that expires July 1st, 2017. Any discussion?
Your Honor, I was just going to say, that's the reason we have a clerk's office, and they keep me away from the important stuff, so. Thank you, sir.
Well, thanks for volunteering. Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Congratulations. Are there any other nominations tonight to boards and commissions?
I believe there is.
Mrs. Scott?
I noticed that we have a lady who has volunteered to serve on the Senior Citizens Advisory Board for a three-year term, so I would then like to nominate Teresa Mitchell to, for a term to expire on June 1st, 2019.
Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor, second.
Mr. Scott, or, Mr. Clark. Thank you. Any discussion? Let's see. Nomination by Councilwoman Scott, seconded by Councilman Clark, to appoint Teresa Mitchell to the Senior Citizens Advisory Board on a term expiring June 2019. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Congratulations. She's appointed. Any other nominations tonight? Okay, hearing none. We'll move on. We do not have an executive session tonight, so before I adjourn the meeting, I'd like to invite City Council to make any closing comments, and we'll begin with Councilman Robert Corbett.
Just one item, Mike. Sir, we will be at the library again this Friday from 1:00 to 3:00. If any resident would like to stop in and ask questions, file a complaint, or just generally give us a big pat on the back because they just love public officials that much.
give us a big pat on the back because they just love public officials that much, as you see fit. We will be there. This will be the last Friday for the summer. The reading club with the children will be taking place there, so we'll make way for higher use, and then we will be back Friday after Labor Day. That's all. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, sir. Mayor Pro Tem Mark Bliss?
Yes, your honor, a couple of things. First and foremost, sigh of young children, as many of you know. We frequent our parks a lot. What many of my colleagues on council may not be aware of is we don't have bathroom facilities in many of our parks. And so when a parent of a young child is at one of those parks, and their child needs to use the restroom, you either have to pack it up or go home, or you're in real trouble, and you better hope that there's a McDonald's or something nearby. And so I asked staff to give me the cost of kind of long-term rentals of family-sized porta-potties, and I was given a cost of $160 a month. We've got about two months left of summer. By my count, and Mr. Vitale could probably come up with the exact number, but by my count, there's about eight of our parks that do not have restrooms available to them. And so I would ask that staff look into and potentially develop something for us to vote on if required that would allocate what's about $2,500 for the couple of months to put porta-potties at our parks, so that way our families can have a place to take their children when they have to take that break and use the restroom. If we're looking for a place out of the budget to take it from, we do have money that is currently budgeted for $14,000 in replacement chairs. Even if we take the, so we've seen a bid estimate of $10,000, even if we vote to accept the chairs at a future council meeting, there's still gonna be $4,000 difference between what's budgeted for the chairs and what's gonna be spent on the chairs. Also, we could take $2,500 out of our council training budget. Those in the audience may know, we have a budget line item every year to educate ourselves and to go to conferences. A lot of years, we don't use it, or we don't use all of it, and so I would ask for the money to come from one of those two sources, or if staff could provide a couple of alternate sources for that money, that would be appreciated, because I do think that the families in our community really deserve a place to use the restroom at one of our public parks while they're playing with their children. Secondly, I just want to point out that I truly take my job as the steward of our citizens' tax dollars very seriously. I fought against the pay increase for council. I fought against those chairs that we were talking about, and also every single non-binding resolution on a principle. I voted for a lot of them, because I agree with the sentiment included, including the one tonight, but I think it's starting to add up. The cost is adding up. If it were just one resolution with one single important issue, I wouldn't have as much of a problem. But by my count, we've now had seven of these important non-binding resolutions in the past 18 months, with an estimated cost of at least $5,000 of taxpayer money. So we've lost out on potential programming, we've lost out on books for the library, Wi-Fi for the senior center, even the porta-potties that I'm asking for right now. And so I'm just asking, and even if we don't have to do a moratorium on these, but let's calm the frequency down. Let's pick very specific, important issues for us to send these resolutions on, not, you know, every other month of council sessions. I mean, let's be a little bit more specific about utilizing them. And then I'd also urge the other members of council that we should just act on issues. If something warrants our opinion, perhaps it warrants us to take a legal action, perhaps it warrants us to write an ordinance to make a law. You know, perhaps it's worthwhile to put to the public as a referendum. What is the line that we're drawing between a personal petition, a council resolution, and enacting an ordinance? And I think that's a question we all have to ask ourselves, is what is that line where I'm gonna send out something personally to my representatives? And then when does it cross that line, and do we need to send it as a legislative body? And then at what point does it cross that line to say, this is such an important issue, we need to enact an ordinance or an actual law out of it? And so I think we just need to have a deeper look at how we, as a body, tackle these big, important issues. And we also need to understand that every minute that our city attorney's office, that our department heads spend on any issue at all, is costing taxpayer dollars. And so we have to understand that with each of those minutes that they type anything into a computer, it's a choice between that and something else. And that's all I ask, is that we pay attention to that, we keep that in the back of our minds, and if there is a really important issue that warrants this discussion, let's take that issue on. I'm happy to do it, but let's cut down the frequency. I think we owe it to our taxpayers. That's it, your honor.
Thank you, sir. I think staff had a follow-up.
Yeah, your honor, just a quick question for Mayor Pro Tem, back to the porta-potty issue. In terms of the staff report, I want to make sure I understand clearly, are you looking for the report to cover providing a porta-potty in every park that does not have one currently? Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
Just, I don't wanna, this isn't the place for it, but I just want to know where that $5,000 figure came from. I know for a fact Mr. Soltis down there wrote two of those resolutions on his own time. Three.
The $5,000 I took, based on taking department head salaries, based on taking the legal review that's going on the attorney's office. Now, I stated that it was an estimate, but also how much money is acceptable.
That's a liberal estimate.
It's not a liberal estimate.
You should be a Democrat counting like that.
Our city attorney's office is $100 an hour, and we have department heads that get paid more than that.
Yeah.
So, I mean, it's one of those situations where I don't care what number you put on it, and I don't necessarily want to just keep having this debate, but I think we're going to, because this has become the place to act as a legislative body on an opinion basis as opposed to actually enacting laws. And I'm sick of it. I think that if we want to tackle these issues, let's tackle them, let's stop patting ourselves on the back, pretending like we're doing anything. Or if it doesn't warrant it, and it's not reaching the level where we're gonna actually enact an ordinance, or we're gonna actually create law, then we need to think about, is that worth Wi-Fi at the senior center? Is it worth buying new library books? We have to have that thought, and I don't think we're doing it right now, and that's my only point. I think we need to be more cautious going forward, because there's a cost to every one of these discussions. That's it.
Thank you. Anything else, Mr. Bliss?
No, that's it, your honor.
Thank you. Councilman Robert Gettings, do you have any closing thoughts?
I've got about eight items, please.
For yours, sir.
I'll make it quick and short. I just wanted to acknowledge a few people here on some hard work. Joe, Melissa, and the other name will come to me in a minute. Joe, for the work on the pathways through the parks, I called him today about it, and he assured me that it's money well-spent, and I totally agree with him. Melissa, for her hard work on the insurance problem and saving us money. And Mr. Schaefer, for his hard work on, I believe, a resolution, or being in Lansing and addressing the folks in Lansing about the I-75 project. And everybody here that works hard at City Hall, keep up the good work. And Mr. Mayor, could I be excused? I have an appointment to get to.
That's fine.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Gettings. Mr. Sherman? Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to extend my sincerest condolences to Councilmember Richard Clark on the passing of his beautiful and wonderful wife, Lois. I've known Lois, I knew Lois for about 30 years. She was a wonderful woman, and I know, having experienced the loss of my mother and seeing what my father is going through after 64 years of marriage, I know it's very tough to lose your partner for life. So all the best, Richard. From this time forward, only good times.
Thank you, Jeffrey.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Gettings?
I totally forgot. I should write stuff down more often. To Mr. Clark, I knew your wife, Lois. She was a wonderful lady, and I just want to say that God has taken her, but He can't take away the memories that you guys and your family had. Those will always be yours forever, and I'm so sorry for your loss. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Myers?
Yes, your honor. Well, I can't state it any better than Councilman Gettings or Assistant City Attorney Rich, my condolences as well, and also to the family of retired police chief Jim Carey, who passed away as well. Just one other item, your honor. We have several informational meetings coming up in our neighborhoods to talk about the important election coming up in regard to proposals R3 and V3, the city ballot proposals. Very quickly, the dates of these meetings, and they're all at 7:00 PM. Staff and I will be there to explain the ballot proposals and answer questions. June 21st at Lessinger Elementary, 30150 North Campbell. June 23rd at Madison Elementary, 27107 Hales. June 30th at the Keys Grace Academy, formerly Edison Elementary, 27321 Hampton. And next month, July 13th, at City Hall. And again, all those meetings are 7:00 PM, so please come out and join. That's all, your honor.
Thank you. Mrs. Prince?
Well, speaking of elections, applications for the August 2nd, 2016 state primary election are available at the city clerk's office or online. You can also download an application and fill it out and send it in. Our phone number is 248-583-0826. If you want to call and request one, we can have one sent to you. The deadline to register for this election is Tuesday, July 5th. That's it, thank you.
Councilman Rich Clark?
Yes, I'd like to say everything that Mayor Pro Tem Bliss on the resolution and the ordinances, sometimes it gets a little out of hand, and I think the quicker we do something about it, you know, we can study amongst ourselves the resolution ordinances before we have to spend the money for the supervisors and everybody else to get involved in it, the attorneys. And then again, I'd like to thank everybody that sent a card, telephone calls, I thank you very much. That's all.
Thank you, Rich. Councilwoman Marjane Scott?
Yes, I, excuse me. Would too like to offer my condolences to Rich in the loss of our dear, his dear wife. And she was a wonderful friend of mine, so the loss is hard on me as well. I know it is hard on her family, but she was just a wonderful lady, and no matter when I called her, she always lightened up my day. She had so many cute jokes and comments to say about things, and I know she loved your family very much, and she was a good mother, too. But I really suffer for her loss, as I'm sure you do, Rich. I also wanted to give my condolences to the family of James Carey. His daughter, Jeannie Barlog, who is also mayor, married to our former police officer, Mr. Barlog, they were our next-door neighbors, and so it's particularly hard on me, too, to hear about these good people that we're losing. On a letter note, I just wanted to say that based on our vote that we did tonight, that on June 23rd, there will be a Neighborhood Block Party. This is for the Madison Elementary, it will be at the Madison Elementary School, which is at 27107 Hale Street, and it will be on June 23rd, Thursday, from 3:00 to 6:00 PM. It's sponsored by the District of Madison and also the United Way. There's gonna be free food, games, and activities for all ages, and this is to kick off their summer food service with the Block Party, which I think is a great idea, because they are now going to try the new concept of distributing lunches for children to have in their own neighborhood. So I think it's really good in reaching the public a lot easier that way. And I also want to honor our veterans again. The Madison Heights Intermediate Women's Club is holding a few fundraisers, two of them already gone by, but the next one is going to be raising money for our veterans so that they can take part in the Mid-Michigan Honor Flight, which, as you know, is a chance for a veteran to go to Washington, DC on a one-day basis and see the veterans' memorials that are in tribute to their fight. And this next one is going to be held on Saturday, June 25th, from 11:00 AM to 7:00 PM, and it will be held at the Penn Station, I had their subs last weekend, they're delicious, which is on 100 West 12 Mile in Madison Heights, and I know that the city already has this advertised on our website. So if you didn't get all the information, it's June 25th, from 11:00 to 7:00. Just stop in, and the Penn Station will donate 20% of our total bill back to the Veterans Fund so that we can honor our veterans. That's all, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman David Soltis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a few things. Real quick, though, you know, with the lead and the copper and the flint thing, I found out, I did a little research, there's zero water pitcher. It's the only one that's certified to take the lead and copper out of the water, so I got myself one. It's at the Bed Bath &amp; Beyond, I'll plug them. First time I've been in there, but hey, you know what? It's a nice place, and it was reasonably priced, so, you know, take a look at that and see what you think. Second, I took a ride today, a phenomenal ride, with a meals and wheels driver here in Madison Heights for the homebound seniors. It was a great experience. I learned their process, they have a fantastic system set up, and then, but the best part, the reason why I went is I wanted to talk to the seniors at home that need this meal. I met them, heard their stories. There's a tremendous need out there, and it's sad, and even on the weekends, some are getting the food, and we'll try to rectify that, but, you know, there is a tremendous need out there. And the ones that I saw, there were three veterans, so it's a whole mix of residents that really need that program, and I'm just trying to think of ways to try to build it up and make it even better. I also wanted to find out some of the other issues that they had, you know, I was asking about, and they were forthcoming. I was asking about, you know, the water bills and the bills that they had and the disabilities, and, you know, if anyone's good at welding or making fabricating metal, there's a gentleman, a veteran, that needs one of those portable ramps for his mobilized wheelchair or scooter. So I'm gonna try and figure out what we can help there. Second, I visited, my son and I went to Free Will Baptist Church down on the South End. I heard that they had a food pantry, and they do, and they've had one for a while, and it's a great thing. I talked to the pastor and the people that run it, and they got a top-notch operation. It's non-perishable goods. They work with cleaners and some of the other big box companies around, and I did it because I wanted to see if there was a need, and they said that there is. There's no doubt, even with, as Councilwoman Scott talked about, Madison School Districts has their food program. I think there's still a need, and that's why I asked the city manager if we could look into hosting a food pantry here in Madison Heights, and we would, I would try to come up with some volunteers, and we would, again, reach out to other organizations and corporations to see if we can supply it that way. That would be virtually no cost to the city. This would all be volunteers. And I'm glad to see us vote the way we did, as a unity, as a council, for the anti-discrimination or, excuse me, not ordinance, but resolution. Our country has a history of overcoming discrimination, sometimes painfully, sometimes lengthy, but in the end, we do always overcome that, and I think that this was a great first step. And by the way, Congressman Levin contacted me via email regarding the child poverty report that I gave. So he's interested in meeting. I sent him a copy, and so that, more to come on that issue. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. You know, it's easy for people to wanna disengage from talking about constitutional rights by saying, you know, the rights enshrined in our Constitution are just some esoteric, you know, jargon that it's only relevant in Washington, DC, but it's actually exactly the opposite. The rights in our Constitution are our rights. The Bill of Rights only makes sense when we use it. The freedom of the press is why CNG News calls us 24/7 for reports. It's why the freedom to assemble, how United Way can use our parks. Fourth Amendment is only important when our police officers train and understand the limits of searches and seizures. And throughout our history, we've never taken the Constitution as unimprovable. We amend it time and time again to improve what we believe is important. We used to consider African-Americans as only 3/5 of a human being. The 13th Amendment abolished slavery and stopped that practice. We have people that live in Madison Heights who were alive when women did not have the right to vote. We fixed that, only recently. I'm so proud of this City Council for taking a really difficult issue and asking our state leaders to slow down the hate that's seen in other states. I'm proud to be the mayor of Madison Heights and one of the members of this City Council. Rich, I mourn the loss of Lois. She was such a good woman, a good wife, a good friend to us, and she's been in my heart lately. I don't know if you watched the Tonys, the Tony Awards, there's a musical called Hamilton based on our founding father, Alexander Hamilton. And there's a line in the show where they tell Alexander Hamilton to "talk less and smile more." And your wife always told me to follow those rules, so I'm gonna take her advice. I'm gonna talk less, I'm gonna smile. So, thank you, Rich. We really miss Lois. So, good night. Thank you for your input, everyone. This meeting's adjourned.